Something is impending this evening, so we need to get a move on. The goal today will be to get done by five as is listed on our schedule. I think that'll get us all out of here safely. So, our first work session today is on the strategic plan, Goal One. We've had the presentation to the board, and so at this point, we're opening up discussion on questions specific to Strategies Three and Four. There'll be opportunity to ask other broader questions at the end if we have time. But for now, I would just turn it over to Francisco.
So, good morning. As Ryan indicated, we do not have another presentation for these areas. We wanted to allow for the time to engage in questions. And so with me, right next to me, is Kathy Oliver, Director of Student Testing, who is available to answer some questions on some of the assessment data that was provided in these areas and other data points. Jen Glazer, Director of Counseling, College and Career Readiness around Strategy Four. Maura Burke, Director of Early Childhood Curriculum and Grant Management from ISD. And of course, Dr. Presidio, Assistant Superintendent of ISD. And I do believe, after talking with Ms. Darnett Kofax and Mr. McKelvin, that we are going to start with Strategy Three first, I believe.
Great.
Which is the area providing quality early childhood experiences aligned with portrait of a graduate outcomes that are designed to prepare students to successfully enter kindergarten. And again, we provided a variety of reports related to some metrics as well as desired outcomes in that area. And so at this time, we will open it up for any questions that you may have specifically on Strategy Three. And Ms. Darnett Kofax, I guess, will tell you how much time we have for that. I think we said an hour and 15 minutes or something for that. I'm not sure. But again, we are happy to be here to answer questions. We also did send some follow-up information in the most recent superintendent updates. There was a link that had some additional information, some questions that were asked of us. And we will work to get all of those additional requests put into an addendum for when it is voted on at the later March meeting for Goal One as a whole, which will include One, Two, Three, and Four. So with that, we'll turn it over to questions.
Just a clarifying question. The information from the superintendent update, is that on Board Docs?
Is it on Board Docs? Not currently. That was just provided recently on Friday. And then it will be, I believe, added to our addendum to Board Docs in time for the voting on, when's the, is it March 23rd? March 23rd?
I think for clarity, for the public's sake, because we've already referenced that, that information's got to be attached to this meeting.
Okay. And most of that information was from One and Two follow-up, but so it wasn't really specific to what we're talking about today, Three and Four. I just wanted to reference it because it's part of the whole goal.
And do you know which date of the superintendent update?
This Friday, this past Monday.
Oh, just this past Friday.
Yeah. So it was all One and Two, right?
It was all One.
Yeah. So all of that was One and Two. And today, we're focusing on Three and Four. But I just, we had not been back before a board and work session about Goal One as a whole. But everything on that is Strategies One and Two.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to start with Mr. Moon.
I just have a problem. I'm going to start with just one question right now. I remember when the board, many years ago, discussed going into full day K from half day, half-day kindergarten to full-day program. That, at the time, there were some parents, members in the community, arguing that full day is not really, that's really too long for kindergarteners. So in that light, in that context, for early childhood experience, how much of experience is appropriate amount to a level of experience, you think?
I just want to make sure I understand. So are you asking whether a full day?
It's a full day, you know, a couple of hours, or, you know, every other day. Just want to have some sense from the professionals.
So I think there's two things you need to think about when we think about full day as student outcome, and then availability of quality programming outside of the school day. So, many of our families work, so having to have your child in multiple places complicates their day, but that's often normal for families with young children. But that's one thing you need to think about. But the other, more important piece is the research is pretty clear about the length and duration that kids are in school, and that longer day actually leads to better outcomes for kids.
So are you saying that rather than half a day, rather than every other day, it's a full day every day?
Yeah.
That is...
That's what shows the best outcomes for kids, is a full day every day.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Along those lines, do you actually have some metrics associated with it of, we introduced full-day kindergarten, what, three years ago, four years ago?
Oh, it was longer than that.
Yeah, but for everybody. And so have we, so it's been six years. So do we have metrics to demonstrate with that cohort how they have achieved, not only on standardized tests, but on other, other metrics?
So you're asking about the kindergarten cohort that started in all-day kindergarten? Okay. So, that, we would have to get you that data. We haven't followed those cohorts of kids, but we could get you that data.
I actually think, I mean, we do have that data. We didn't report that data in this report. I was just referring back to the slides to see the longitudinal data that we did report. And that begins on Slide 20 with the longitudinal data for pre-K students through sixth grade. And that goes back to the 2004, 2005 cohort. So we'd have to double-check and figure out which year full-day K actually was implemented, because I know that was implemented before I started here five years ago. So I'm not exactly sure which year that was, but we could clarify that for you and then provide some correlated data associated with that.
That's the way to answer Mr. Moon's question, is with real data, that, you know, we made this assumption, which I think is an accurate assumption, but we should now be able to prove it.
So, Mr. Paris and I are kind of side-barring here. We do have that data. We didn't include that data in this report, though. So, yeah. Yeah.
Ms. Strauss?
Just a little more information on that data. When we originally did full-day kindergarten, we began by using Title I money. And so the original statistics showed that for high-needs children, giving them a full day of instruction actually brought them up to great expectation with students who came to school ready to learn. And in the end, when we finally went to full-day kindergarten for everybody, and that was in large part because of the change in academic expectations for all children, not only from the state, but also from Fairfax County. So, the non-Title I students who finally went to full-day kindergarten, it was, there was finally enough time to teach the entire curriculum. So, the data for your already high-achieving children is not necessarily going to change that they became even more high-achieving, but that from the perspective of instructional time and teachers, that there was less stress, there was more opportunity to actually meet the, particularly the literacy and numeracy standards that were required of all students. So that's really where that data will show. But all along, we have been tracking particularly the Head Start data, because that's been critical. We've been tracking that for a very long time to show that children in high-quality, pre-K, particularly high-quality wraparound services that Head Start provides, shows over time, higher achievement, higher, higher positive data all the way around because of the services for parents, the opportunity for childcare, and the opportunity for many more services other than just literacy and numeracy. So, but anyway, that was just to bring you up to date as to data collection for all of that, right?
Yeah. And I think, what I recall, one of the benefits of being old is being around for a while. So I think when we made this decision, we had some inequities, that you had part-day programs and full-day programs. And we looked at those comparative results, and it was clear that kids that were in the full-day program had far greater benefits, as Sloan talked about, in terms of their outcomes.
Yeah. So just one other brief comment on that, because I appreciate the comments by Ms. Strauss and Mr. Paris. Just as a reminder, that the only data that we included in this report are the requested board, board-requested metrics. So that's what I was referring to. We have the data, we just did not include it in this report. So we're happy to get that for you if that's a request of next step.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Thank you for this report. I would, I would like a little more information, I guess in general, where we are and what we can do. So now we have the successful children and youth policy team out there as far as dealing with this issue and how we are going to deal with it. Yet, if you look at Slide 10, we still see 26% to 30% of the families in Herndon Falls Church and the Mount Vernon Pyramid don't have the kind of preschool experience that we want them to have. I think that's an important slide to note. And then when you go on to, and maybe if you can use Slide 19 again, because as someone who's, you know, as this board, on this board has always been an advocate for pre-K, it's still difficult for me, if I haven't been immersed in it on a daily basis, to see how all of those programs work together and how they're braided together. So my, I guess my big question is, and this is a, you know, more than just philosophical, but given the Skip Committee, given what we have here, given the continuing change in demographics and the needs we see, what can we as a school system do? How is this slide on 19 going to help us? What can we, what parts can we ramp up on this Slide 19? And then what can we do to alleviate some of those pockets? I know that's a big philosophical question, but I kind of want the conversation today to try to refresh board members on where we need to be going. Where is the school system responsible for? Where is the county? And how can we braid those services together? And then what are we getting from the state? Where do we need to lobby more from the state? Because I know there's definite places there, and also the federal government, which gives us very, very little, but we need a great deal more. So, I know that's kind of big, but, sorry, Maura.
So, on this slide, this is, this talks specifically about funding sources. With the exception of early Head Start, the funds are berated for Virginia Preschool Initiative and Head Start. We do not, the bottom half, we do not braid the funds. Virginia Preschool Initiative is a four-year grant, and we're in the middle of that grant. We're in our second year. And if it's funded for next year, and hopefully the federal government will fund it for its fourth year. And early Head Start is for infants and toddlers. So, the berating comes at the top level of those, the Virginia Preschool Initiative and Head Start. And those, sorry to sort of label it slots, but those are the number of slots available based on that funding for children. This includes both the county and the public schools. The berating happens primarily in the public schools. In the county, they keep it separate. So Head Start classrooms are run in community programs. And then VPI programs, they, I mean, slots are in community preschools. So, there are actually Head Start-designated community programs, which are Higher Horizon and Greater Mount Vernon. And then Virginia Preschool Initiative are in a variety of community programs, for-profit and nonprofit. So, an example of that is Main Street in Fairfax City, Creative Learning down on Route One, Laurel Learning Center out in Reston. So, the county partners with the community programs and berades childcare subsidy funds with the Virginia Preschool Initiative funds to partner with those programs. So, it's quite complex.
Yes, I know that. Regarding the chart on Page 10. As a school system, how can we help?
So, I think our first step is that, and we wrote, this was captured in the report, that you as a board did a wonderful job creating strategies and outcomes that are focused on early childhood. And now the county is in the midst of developing a strategic plan for early childhood. We are just at the beginning of that. They have done a community assessment to really capture the current landscape of Fairfax County and early childhood programming. And now we are at the point of developing some strategies that will complement your work. So, I think they are very aware of this. I've shared this hot map with them, and as a result of that, we will be using this data to begin to look at how the county and the schools can continue to partner to address some of these issues.
So this is the Office for Children, right?
Yes.
Just a few things that I would maybe add, and I'm kind of editorializing here a little bit, so you'll have to forgive me. But as the county develops their strategic plan, and we have our future joint shared service meetings with them, and early childhood is going to be one of the topics, I think, that we will be discussing, staff and boards from both organizations. I do think it would be appropriate to try to figure out, what are some common goals that we want to set? And what are some ways that we might want to actually target some accountability metrics and measures, along with funding, associated to some joint goals? Because I think it's great that the county's developing a strategic plan, but I do think there are opportunities for us to work more closely together. And I think we need to explore those. And one of the areas that Maura and I have talked about for a number of years, that we'd really like to partner with the county, is this idea of community schools, which I know has been discussed at the recent Skip meetings. And I had a really good conversation, actually, with Dean Ginsburg from GMU the other day about community schools. Because it's not just getting these kids into preschool slots, it's also trying to figure out, what are the health and human services that need to be associated with supporting these families? So, there are communities that have taken that approach, and they're definitely models, I think, that Fairfax County could look at. And I would say that might be an area for some future discussion about how we can more strategically work together to target some of these pockets and areas of need.
The one thing, and I think, I'll just put this out there, Dr. Presidio, because we've had our separate meetings on, you know, equity and things like that. So when you talk community schools, can you just, because I think different people have different ideas of what that would entail, can you, can you give me at least your definition of what that would look like?
Yeah, I appreciate that question, because I do think we want to kind of expedite the process by which, as a county, we would define what we mean by community schools. So I know that the Skip group is working on that right now. But when I talk about community schools, and this is the conversation, again, that I had with Dean Ginsburg, there's a pretty good research base that talks about the effectiveness of wraparound services for students and families. So, a model of a community school would be something larger than just providing the educational services for early childhood education. A model might look like a community resource center, where you have educational services that are provided for early childhood education, special ed early childhood education as well, preschool as well. But you would also have services, health services, dental services for families, employment services for families, so that families actually would be able to start to have the supports that they need to help support their students effectively, which is really difficult when you're unemployed or you're not healthy, to be able to be as focused as you would like to be on your children's education. And there are good models of that around the country. And I think that's, those are the kinds of things that we talk about, or should talk about, when we talk about community schools here. It's not just pushing in some part-time services into a school where we have preschool education. It would be more comprehensive and holistic than that.
Okay. I had three that I think I want to touch on similar points. So, Dahlia, Elizabeth, and Janie. So Dahlia?
Thank you. Mine is following up on Ms. Darnett Kofax. I know we have long-term plans, and I know we've tried to expand some of what we're doing in the short term. Because in the short term, we have kids, especially, you know, have quite a few in the Falls Church Pyramid, who don't have access to programs. And when it comes to community schools, you know, I think the Graham Road Center is starting to provide a lot of those services. And there's still a little bit of room in the school, I don't know how much exactly, where we could start to maybe pilot bringing in other health-related services. So I guess my question is, well, in the long term, we're waiting for the strategic plan for being able to expand pre-K services. In the short term, we have thousands of kids every year who aren't receiving access to any of these services. And so I'm wondering, I know we have some that are not as costly as full-day pre-K. So have we looked at the idea of phasing in more students at these services that we know we don't want necessarily long-term, and then starting to phase them out with other avenues as we implement the strategic plan?
So we do have a wealth of other opportunities, and we are working closely with our community partners to get that information out. So we have programs like Healthy Families, that comes out of the Health Department, where visiting nurses go in and work with families. We also have our Early Lit program here in the county that does a great deal of outreach to needy communities, as well as a family-lit program. We have some parenting education work that comes out of the county as well. More recently, we have done some work in the Falls Church area within Bailey's, where we've worked closely with the principal to target some opportunities there at Bailey's Elementary, where she has allocated some of her Title I funding to support a playgroup from birth to five, so really reaching those families. We did do some focus group around, with those families, some interviews with those families, and found out sometimes not going to preschool is a choice. So families are not choosing to go for a variety of reasons, cultural reasons being one of them. And providing an opportunity where the child and mother can, or a family member can come together is a nice way of creating some opportunity with also respecting the family. So that, we are, we just started that at Bailey's last week, so we will begin to do some observation and data collection around that. So that's a nice opportunity as well, our more traditional pieces that we are trying to grow, like the Family Lit and the Early Lit and Hippie Program.
I'm very happy to hear you say that. And I guess that's the program I'm, have especially heard about. Went to West Lawn, I think, earlier this year, and had a mom come and pull me aside and say, she's so happy, even though her child didn't make it into Head Start, she went through a Family Lit, Early Lit, and by the time she got to kindergarten, she didn't need any additional services. And I know the principal there used some of her funds to help expand and bring the program there. So I know we have these programs at work. I guess what I'm asking for is, I would love to maybe see a proposal, you know, in the short term, how we could maybe expand these services in these targeted areas as we wait for expansion. So I don't know if that's something that you're considering?
So, all of this is always, you know, a fiscal issue at the end of the day, in terms of how we provide services. So, a couple of things I would say, in addition to the shared kind of services that, an expansion of services that Maura talked about, another thing that we would like to try to do is provide more training and more access to some of the really rich curriculum and materials and resources that we have in our early childhood program to some of those other providers. So you might remember, and it's on Slide, I'm just trying to think about going back to Slide Six, the different kinds of feeder patterns that we have. So really trying to get some experiences where we can provide more training and more resources and materials to families, beyond things that we're already doing in the Early Lit program, for example, in some of these community-based programs, family, friends, and neighbors-type programs. So that's another thing we would like to do. I would say that would be an area of shared services, though, that we should really discuss with the county. Because the county could be a really, really powerful partner in that type of expansion as well. And that might allow us to focus more on the things that we could do to bring in the students that are not being served in any kind of program, through early-lit programs, through things like the strategies that Maura discussed, that we're piloting at Bailey's. So, to me, I think we ought to have that conversation as part of that shared services conversation. And then the other issue is, it really does come kind of back to funding in terms of, you know, starting new classrooms and getting more kids off of the waitlist. But there are things that we can do for reduced cost.
So I just want to piggyback on that. So on Slide 11, that's the example of how we're beginning to try to push out some best practices into community programs. This will be launched on a website later in April, that we will be soliciting partnerships with community programs to really create that alignment. We're also working with the Family and School Partnership to look at their early-lit program to create better alignment, because we know that the research is pretty clear when that alignment can happen, birth to third grade, that there's better outcomes for kids. So, back to Sloan's point, we have started that piece about reaching out in the community, and we are doing the website in collaboration with Office for Children.
Okay. Elizabeth, Janie, then Karen.
So, I'm confused a little bit about the structure that's going on here, Mr. McElveen. Are we only talking about early childhood right now? Are we, I mean...
No, you can, if you have other things on Goal Three and Four, you can certainly raise those.
Okay. Well, I do want to start back at Slide 10, just briefly, and then go to Slide 19. While I can appreciate that this is quote-unquote a heat map, it isn't really in terms of what I was expecting, or what I was hoping, and maybe it's someplace else, and I haven't seen it yet, is where the students are. This reflects where the students aren't receiving preschool experience. The question is, on the transparency, if I laid over, you know, the dots of where are the students who don't fit on, and then you can flip to Slide 19. So, and this is missing one as well, which is, how many more are we not serving? So, connecting the data is, okay, this is who we can serve, and this who isn't getting preschool. I want to know, what's the universe, you know, on a Venn diagram, this is, you know, a subset of, you know, and how big is, you know, I don't know, is it, are they, would they all be eligible for Head Start? Would they, I mean, where do they fit on this that we're not meeting? Where do they reside? And where's the gap? Because we can't have conversations as, as we embark on a, hopefully, a more clear relationship with the Board of Supervisors, and we talk about things like facilities as Mr., he's not here, as Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Sneed have gotten, finally, facilities is getting that more nuanced geocoding and the spas set up for, and not spas, spas, but student planning areas, set up. Now, now you're getting into identifiable areas where people reside, where services are located, where there's no place to provide the services, meaning that's a facility's deficit. And then, now you get to actionable intelligence for the board, which is the population, where the population is, where the services are, where we do or do not have space in facilities. And now you're talking about a collaborative, operationally, you know, we could deliver services, but we have no space. services, but we have no space. Or, you know, the kids are where the space isn't, or, you know, NNN. And I get that this is, you know, on a per annum basis, whoever the population of kids are, but that's about it, right? That, I mean, those numbers would be static from year to year that are on this slide, is that correct?
Yeah.
Approximately. That's, so, so right now, we have a static ability to provide services. I don't know where those services are being provided. So where are we providing the services? Where are the kids? Where's the gap?
So I think that would be really helpful information for the board. I appreciate you asking for that. We're happy to provide that. It's just as a reminder, I mean, the board-approved metric on this was the available pre-K opportunities and number of students participating in pre-K programming. So the data that, you know, we provide is in response to that. So I think Ms. Schultz has clarified a better way to provide information that would be more useful to the board, so we're happy to do that. And in addition, I think we might actually want to change this metric, so that the metric reads differently for future reports for the board, so that we provide information in that way.
I agree, I agree 100%, but I feel like I already had, I'm having deja vu all over again, Yogi Berra. I feel like we are, I did this. And maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that the last time we had this conversation, the identification of the need for the heat map, and there was an acknowledgement on my part that it wasn't necessarily included in the heat map, but, I mean, in the, in the, in the metric. But just because the metric says what it says, which is, this is what information you should provide us, it doesn't necessarily mean we got the metric right, or that you should rise to the minimum of the metric.
Yeah, I would just say, I definitely agree with you. I'm happy to revise the metric. As the board, and I don't know if the board is going to schedule another annual review of the strategic plan, like last summer, there was a retreat, and you looked at the strategic plan, we made some revisions to some of the metrics and some of the actions. To the extent that we can capture those things there, I think it's really helpful when we can do that as well.
Okay, you know how Trader Joe's rings a bell when somebody does good service or something? So that's my ding 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 for acknowledgement that something needs to be done, acknowledgement in our, in our plan that we've got a next step. And, and, you know, like, all of a sudden, I feel like Ms. Darrenat Kofax and I are, there's a syncope happening.
Well, I want to say, and this is no discouragement to the staff here, the heat map does exist, I've seen it, and it's in facilities, so it needs to be overlaid on this.
But we can get it in the report.
Yeah, right. It needs to be in this report, because it does exist.
My point, and, and this is a consistent theme, is the need for board members, staff, the public, to have to cobble together multiple documents. And, you know, something in a superintendent's update, and something in, you know, the strategic goal, and something. There, there has to be an ever-pursuing goal to the light at the end of the tunnel of conjoining the information that is resident with the information that people need and bringing them together. And whether it's in documents, and if we, if we as the board have to improve our metric guidelines to you, you know, again, I'm in the help me, help you, help me, help you. Okay, so moving on, I am going to briefly change topics. If we could go to, well, it doesn't really have a particularly great slide, to be perfectly honest. It is Slide 30, but in the backup documentation, it's Page 68. So this is on FLESS. It says that with the addition of Korean at Colin Powell, there are currently 53 FLESS learning through content programs, providing early language, and that there's more expansion efforts underway. As I talk to principals, the continuity of, or the longitudinal maintenance of a language of a student through a pyramid is in question, a lot. And it's in question in terms of staffing at the middle school and high school level, in terms of cost, in terms of the complexity of a master calendar. And then the concept that we're potentially, like, continue to expand FLESS, and whether that, there is a maintenance of language interest by the students that we spend an awful lot of time on, is there, is there anybody looking at, you know, a cohort of students who spent five years in, in Chinese and get to Fairfax High School, and a handful continue? Or Italian in the Woodson Pyramid, and then maintain Italian?
Yeah, so that is something that we look at in instructional services. And we also had a joint task force, I think it was 2014, 15 school year that was convened that reported to, to the board and made a number of recommendations. And one of the areas that they identified as a challenge, much as you say, is the articulation of languages from the elementary to the middle to the high school level, particularly in the languages that are less common in terms of, you know, enrollment and interest. So it's definitely a challenge, it's something we've been working with the principals' associations around. We have a process in place before we even approve a language. And one of the challenges, of course, is as people, you know, change positions and principals come and go, remembering some of those agreements. But we've had that process in place, and we renewed the process to ensure that before we approve any language, a number of things have to happen. One, there has to be sufficient community engagement within that school community, so that the stakeholders, the parents and the kids, are in support of offering that particular language. And two, that the articulation agreement is in place across the levels, from elementary to secondary. It's less of a problem in FLESS, quite honestly, than it is in our immersion programs, because the immersion programs, the students have already ident, really developed pretty deep language skills by the time they leave elementary school. So you have to staff them at higher levels of language at the middle and the high school level. So we have more challenges, actually, in the immersion programs than we have in FLESS, because the FLESS is more of an exposure and an enrichment program for students. So it is a real issue, it is a real concern. It's one that we try to address on the front end from a planning standpoint. And we've tried to balance that with the board and the community's interest in having a diversity of languages taught in the county as well. So that was the other thing that came up in that task force report, is that there had been a desire on the part of the community and the board to have strategic languages instructed in our county. So things like Arabic, things like Chinese, things like Korean, other languages that have strategic value in terms of international and global relations in the community as well, as opposed to just your more traditional languages that have been taught in the county. So trying to find the right balance on that, I think, is the challenge for all of us.
Can I, can I ask a question, then?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you happen to know the data point of the Byte Literacy Seal? How many of those students were foreign language, possessed a foreign language, so that English was their second language?
Right. I don't, I don't believe it was very many. I'd have to check that data point and get back to you.
So these were all native English speakers who acquired a second language?
My understanding is that the vast majority is, but I would have to double-check that data back.
Okay, I would be interested in that as a data point.
Yeah, I'm happy to get that.
Because, because what I, what I'm finding is, the practicality of what we're doing and the patchwork of what we're doing, and how that translates budget-wise and staffing-wise for the upper grades, is far more of a challenge than I knew it was. And I'm appreciating the time with my middle and high school principals, but there, there's like a cognitive dissonance between what we want to do and what's actually happening. And, and the, and the cost impact, and, and the staffing problems that are associated with that. I think we, we may have created, like, a groundswell of a problem that is coming. And whether we need to look at consolidating FLESS into more, you know, or if there's something in between FLESS and immersion, that FLESS is, you know, 30 minutes twice a week is, you know, largely being rejected, not only by my, by my principals, but by, by the parent population. They're like, if we're going to do it, we want to do it so that it has, that it's more than just enrichment, that it, there's some language acquisition. Because otherwise, that's a very, very costly endeavor, and the kids are frustrated. And on flip side, on staff side, the principals are like, I've got to maintain, you know, and I'm struggling in a complex master calendar where, you know, the requirements on kids are, you know, tightening, and kids want to pursue a, whether it's some CTE credits, or they want to pursue an advanced diploma, then they're struggling to fit in, how do I offer these, you know, whether it's upper language, and I appreciate you differentiating, because that's, that's the key, too.
Right.
Is not only is it, you know, maybe some of these notional exposure, and now I've got to provide the tiered, but now I've got to provide, you know, now I've got to be working with the Italian Embassy in order to get funding, or, you know, I have, you know, this whole cohort of kids that supposedly have five years of exposure to, to a foreign language, and I have 12 who want to continue it. You know, how do you, how do you, how do you fund that?
So there's no great answer to that, but one thing I would say that we've been trying to explore is the use of technology, both on the FLESS side, to get additional instructional experiences for students. So if you have your 60 minutes with the teacher, using technology to supplement that, to get some additional skill building for students, is one thing that we've tried to explore. And then on the other side, trying to use technology to staff classes that might be a Level 3 or a Level 4, Chinese, for example, that a student wouldn't be able to take in their base school. So we're trying to think about how we can use technology to help with that. There's no perfect solution to it. And I think, you know, I would really categorize it, or characterize it, I guess I should say, is, we have been trying to balance the need to have a diversity of languages with the staffing and the fiscal challenges of doing that. So that's really where we're at programmatically right now. And going forward as a board, I think that's probably a, be a very helpful discussion for the board to continue to have.
And I have just one last area that I want to touch on, on Slide 30, no, 21, I'm sorry. And this is probably too, too complex to get into here, but it's something I sidebarred with Mr. Paris on. This is an interesting side-by-side of cohorts, but it's not longitudinal in terms of the presentation of the data. And I think we have it, but if, for example, I say, grade 5, the 2005, 6 cohort for, for reading, that FCPS-FRM without fee sup number, the red bar, looks pretty different than the 2001, 2. But I'm comparing cohorts that are completely different. The cohort, the, the matriculation of that cohort from kindergarten changed vastly. My question is, can you not show us the 2001, 2 cohort by grade 8, what they look like over time? And then the 2005, 6 cohort by grade 8 over time, what they look like? Where did they wind up? Like, this is a dipstick at a moment in time of a, not homogenous, homogenous, but homogenous in the cohort. That's one cohort at one point in time, one set of scores. What did, what happened over time? You know, did, was there, you know, did we rise to the level that by grade 8, oh, look, even though you have a difference in, you know, look at the 2007, 8 cohort, by the time they got to grade 8, where did everybody wind up? So the year-after-year cohorts, and, you know, that may be something that you, you're better able to answer later at a work session, or there's, there's, but I think the data is there. It, but this is, this is interesting, but I don't know how much it informs. What it does show is, is that from year to year, you can have a vastly different performing cohort. How, how kids do in 5th grade is interesting, you know, how'd they wind up their, their K through 8, you know, elementary years, how'd they wind up with their post-secondary, or their secondary years?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Evans.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up on what Ms. Schultz was just saying, is that years ago, we used to be able to get better data on students who were, who were with us consistently over a period of time. And it would always show the longer we had a student in consistent instruction with us. But we, it was also a time where you had consistent data points that you could use and consistent population. And once we began having changes in assessment, changes in, in expectations, you know, every two or three or four years, you were resetting the clock. Maybe at some point in time, we'll get back to showing that, because it, generally, the longer we have a student in school with us, with our own curriculum and our own teachers, they will do better than obviously a student who is, who is in and out and has interrupted schooling and all the rest of it. But that has so much to do with external factors and our ability to actually gauge that. On the FLESS and world languages, two things, and I'm not sure how we ever get beyond this. First of all, the acknowledgement that the cognitive flexibility that comes with learning a second language is there regardless of what language. And it just is there. And with MRI imaging, they can see that, even sometimes house with Alzheimer's, I don't know. The other problem, the other challenge that we have is that parents will have an affinity towards a romance language for cultural reasons. They studied Italian, they studied French, you know, they, whatever it is. You, you have those people who just love those languages and love the culture and the, the literature, the music, the what-have-you. And yet, you get a pushback from current business interests who say, or even from our own federal government, we need certain languages because we're not able to hire people, and it's usually Arab and Chinese. And so, you know, we just constantly have it. If we were really hard-nosed and said the only languages we will teach now are Spanish, Arabic, and Chinese, you know, our parent population would be very upset. So that's kind of an ongoing piece. But I appreciate the fact that as we look at opportunities through technology, through other means, for children to continue with their exposure with another language, because it makes them smarter. So just, you know, slogging along with that. And then going back to the Slide 10, that shows the parts of the county where we have large numbers of children who are not getting the kind of pre-K exposure that we would like. Two interesting pieces. One is it looks like in Reston, they have somehow resolved their issues, because it looks like in the South Lakes, that would be South Lakes-Reston area. I know there's been a great deal of work in community resource, Reston is Reston. And so that I'm wondering, in population, that have they figured out things that the rest of us need to look more closely at? And then in Herndon, which is my community, I understand that extremely well, what our challenges are. So as we know that we are going to have to build more elementary schools along the sort of Route 28 corridor, whether it's, we have, we know we've got two or three more schools out there, plus the renovation at Clearview, and also looking at space in downtown Herndon. And in our various committees with the Board of Supervisors, sometimes it is identifying the space with the plans in our back pocket, and this is how we will do it, rather than, because in the past, where we've said we, we really would like community school, and we get sort of backed into a corner that we really don't, that doesn't deliver that service, either because we don't have the acreage that we need, the Board of Supervisors already have a plan for a different service center model that is standalone. And it's like, we keep saying, but couldn't we do this together? And I guess later on, we're going to get the Planning Commission, whatever, but it is getting out far enough ahead. So as we know that Coats is under renovation, I'm, I'm sorry, Clearview, which is a Herndon school, and needs more services. We have another new school coming in just on the other side of the Dallas Tower Road. I mean, where are we in terms of physical planning in delivering the wraparound services that would include early childhood, Head Start, opportunities for family? And then the other part is the Adams Center, because culturally, we have families that may or may not wish to do preschool, but they still would benefit from the early literacy would benefit from the early literacy, early numeracy and stuff. So, where are we with those pieces? In physical planning for the schools that we know are gonna have construction in exactly those areas where we need help?
So, not seeing Mr. Plattenberg at the table, I'd probably need to defer answering that question right now. I would say, I think we're at the very initial stages of any conversation around that. The conversations we've had about community schooling with the county have really more been, if we could get a commitment to do that, could we go into an existing location, that there might already be space, as opposed to actually building space out, which I love. I think that's a great suggestion. But I don't think we've really begun that process in earnest at all. But again, I'd need to defer to Mr. Plattenberg on that.
Yeah, because that's a critical piece. I mean, we've been talking years about this. And then we get very disappointed when the county does its standalone, usually human services, building what-have-you. And we're either renovating or having to build a school not very far from it. And we say, can't we get this thing together for a library, or, you know, I think of Mason, the arguments over time. Then the other question is, again, as we partner, I know we have Fairfax Futures that continues to look at training for daycare providers that helps with this. And then the other issue is, in churches, and specifically in the Adams Center, whether or not there are any discussions at all with partnering on early childhood, because there would be families and, and mothers in numeracy, literacy.
So, we haven't had specific discussions about the Adams Center, but some of the work that is happening in Opportunity Neighborhoods is addressing this.
Right.
And, again, the Reston community, that Opportunity Neighborhood is just at its infancy and starting. So, we, I can make sure that we begin to have the more in-depth discussion about how to get the opportunities out into the community. We do continue to partner with them about creating learning opportunities, not only for community programs, but for families. So, I, I do think that's an important goal, that should be included in that early childhood readiness piece.
And when the funding for Opportunity Neighborhood became available in Reston, and I know Cornerstones is the, is the provider for that, and then the question is whether or not any of that can bleed over into Herndon, because I'm looking at, Reston is not the dark green, that yellow that Herndon is, where the need is.
So, I just recently joined that team.
Oh, good.
So that's something that, I literally have just gone to one meeting, and I know it's existed for a while. So that is something I can bring up to Christine Brennan, who's leading the group.
Yeah, because I know Carrie Wilson, we were hoping that Cornerstones would be able to have enough money to bleed into the area that really, really needs them. So, I'm glad you're now on that committee. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Karen, to be followed by Sandy and Megan.
I'm glad that Janie mentioned the Opportunity Neighborhoods, because I was going to actually bring that up. I've actually attended all the Opportunity Neighborhood meetings in the Mount Vernon region. And they do, do quite a bit. But the success of the Opportunity Neighborhood in that area is really dependent on the participation of the various groups, some which are formerly part of the Opportunity Neighborhoods, and others that have said, you know, this is an important effort, and we want to add into it, or participate. And so, along those lines, I was gonna suggest that we should be doing more with the Opportunity Neighborhoods. But I was also going to suggest that there, at least in the Mount Vernon region, which has that dark color, there are two other groups that can help in this area. One is the volunteers, and when I mention it, it's more on bringing them in as potential stakeholders to share the, the lessons that you want to push out into the community. And they are Volunteers in Community, which is a grouping of all of the nonprofits in the Mount Vernon region. And they meet once a month, and they have a specific area of interest that they focus on in that month. And so, if you think that would, it would be helpful, it would be great to have you guys come out and meet with them. And they, they go by the code word, the VEC. So I'll be happy to introduce you. You may have seen some of the people that are engaged in that. And then there's the South County Human Services Committee. And the South County Human Services Committee is actually a combination of not only some of the nonprofits, but some of the elected officials, the government officials, but it also has the, Inova Health System is at the table, as well as some of the, actually, each of the community HOAs. And so what you find with that group is that, because in the Mount Vernon Pyramid, you'll see a difference between the HOAs, which are, the value of the housing is actually, reflects differently than the dark color on the screen. But those HOAs are very active in trying to support some of these community activities. So either one of those organizations would be great for you to tap into for pushing out the literacy programs, and pushing out more of what you're doing, so it becomes more of a grassroots effort. And if you'd like, I can make sure that you have intros to both of them. And then, I'm gonna switch subjects here. And I'd like to go to page 30 on your world language, and kind of piggyback on what Ms. Schultz was mentioning about the cohort. I have had some questions with some of our elementary schools of frustrating that there is not a continuity of programming available for students. And that was something, I was actually on the task force in 2014, which we urged that there would be a continuity of programming. So if you all can revisit that, that'd be great. But the other thing that came out of that world language task force was the need for-
Internationalization.
The internet, thank you, you're right. There were two things. One was that there needed to have availability in all of our middle schools, a 7th grade option for languages that was a whole-year option, so that kids that went up through the FLESS program didn't have to then split language across 7th and 8th grade, which I would love to hear you all talk a little bit about that. But the other piece of it, on that internationalization task force, was a, a wish to leverage the proximity of Fairfax County Public Schools to Washington DC with all of the international embassies. Because, and this actually is something that I had brought up on that task force, because when I was in Europe, the way that the international piece at the different schools, elementary schools, was pushed out, was that there was a leveraging of the international community in Brussels. And those embassies actually provided guest speakers, they provided opportunities, but they also created opportunities for, for that virtual learning or virtual classrooms, so that every school that had a, had an international component, also had some other school in a different location that they could communicate with. And so, I think if we can build those links, that will actually strengthen the program more than it is today. Because there is some questions about the value of that FLESS versus the immersion programs. And so, doing those things to strengthen it, and to reinforce that continuity by having a 7th grade option, a full-year 7th grade option, I think is important. And then on page 70 of the report, we have the virtual-
Did you, did you want me to respond to either of those, or?
Sure, if you want to, and then I'll go to the next one. That'd be great.
Okay. Just real briefly, because I think those are both really important questions to be asked, and, and great suggestions in terms of the work that we would like to be doing as a school system. So first, with respect to streamlining, I guess I would characterize it as streamlining the course offerings for second language at the middle schools. We are in the process of doing that. We've not been able to accomplish that at every middle school, but we've been piloting that and working with several middle schools to try to be able to do that, which creates more flexibility for staffing, because a principal doesn't have to staff multiple levels of language. So, we're continuing to work on that, and I think we're making some good progress on that. With respect to internationalization, that, again, is an area that we definitely would agree that we would need to, we need to do more, and we would like to do more in. One success that I would highlight is at Centerville Elementary School, where we have been able to establish a global classroom experience, where we've been able to partner with a school in Costa Rica, and work with them both virtually and in person. We had some folks that were able to actually travel on a grant to Costa Rica to strengthen that partnership. And it's great, just in terms of not just the cultural exchange for students, but the connections that we have in Costa Rica with some scientists that are actually working on environmental issues that then our students can learn from and participate in as well. So those are the kinds of experiences that we would like to develop. But it does take a lot of time on the ground to put those partnerships in place. So we're doing the best that we can to support schools with that, but it is pretty time-intensive. But when they, when they materialize, I think they add lots of value for, for the students. There's no question about it.
And thank you for teeing up that partnership piece, because that's exactly what my next question was, which is on how we can actually strengthen the partnerships. And I know people won't be surprised to hear that a frustration of mine is that the level of partnerships for schools differs greatly across the county. And I don't consider backpacks as a partnership program. I think that's a support program, but it's not a, it's not a partnership program. And so, having a focused, or renewed focus on how we have real and meaningful partnerships for all of our schools, with a focus on, you know, that's obviously one area. But the academy programs also don't have partners to the same level. I know that we're strengthening, strengthening the partnership with Inova at West Potomac, but that's kind of a grassroots approach. And so I think it would be helpful for the system to really take a fresh look at how we, how we do partner, because, because it is a concern. And then one last, and I'm kind of jumping around, but if we go to page 30, 31 and 32, of the, let me see, 32, of the presentation, you actually have a list of post-secondary educational institutions. And, once again, this would be very helpful, to have this data disaggregated, to look, compare this with our heat map that we saw earlier, of what is the data as far as by high school, of percentages that go on to attend, 4-year, 2-year, military employment, other educational plans. And then I would actually add, or are using a, their certifications that they achieved in high school in a work environment.
We are currently actually working on a report like that, so you will be able to see that soon, by high school. This is the, and this referencing here is the survey, Excess Survey. And so we are breaking it down by region, and also by high school, in the process of doing that.
That would be really helpful. And I think what that will start teasing out is, I would like us to start looking more aggressively at having an early, early college opportunity for our base high schools. You know, finding, maybe trialing it at one of our schools that does not have the number of students going on to the 4-year colleges, and if there is a way that we can do something more aggressively on the early college. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Karen, Sandy, then Megan.
Oh, thank you. I want to, just again, congratulate you on an excellent, very thorough report. I just had a couple of things I wanted to focus on that we haven't talked about yet. And one is the ESOL pilot at Lee and Stewart, which I know we've expanded this year. But I wanted to get a sense from you of overall how it's working. I see on page, I'm not sure which page it is, page 19 perhaps, of the report, that quite a few are receiving the English language, the English 9 credit. I'm speaking of the, the longer report, when I talk about page 19. We're nearing the, the end of the second year on, on that. And I just wanted to get a sense of, I know at the end of the first year, we felt it was working pretty well. Overall, is, is that getting our students better on a, on a path toward graduation, toward getting more credits? What's your sense of that?
Yeah, so, excuse me, last year, we piloted the program at Lee and Stewart, and we have the data for those two schools included in the narrative report-
Right.
-that the board looked at, and that we discussed as part of Strategies 1 and 2. This year, we've expanded the program in various forms to all of our high schools. So all of our students at all of our high schools have the opportunity to be on a 4-year track to graduation now. We have to remember that some of them, it will take them longer based on the level of English proficiency, and based on their academic experiences that they bring into the school. But we've got all of our high schools right now on a 4-year track towards graduation for ESOL students, and I think that's working quite well. Rich Polio's in the back here. If we have a lot of questions, we'll bring him up to the table. But he's done a fantastic job leading his team, supporting the schools, and making this transition, because it's very significant in terms of the delivery model that, that we've implemented. So we're at all, all 26 of the high schools right now. We're seeing similar results to the ones that we've seen at Lee and Stewart, and we're happy to provide more data on that to the board, as you're interested. And in addition, what we're seeing is that now, we're trying to expand some of the components of this program down into the middle school level. So our Strategies for Success Course, which is really a course to bring students in, particularly students that have had interruptions to formal education, to help bring them in to the school system, and equip them with the skills and the supports that they need to be able to navigate a very complex educational system like we have in Fairfax. So we're starting to try to put some of those supports in place at the middle school level now. So I think we're moving in the right direction, and we're continuing to hear really good results, you know, or see really good results, both quantitatively and hear good results qualitatively, from kids and teachers in the schools.
And I do appreciate all the work that's going on, and trying to advocate at the state level for changes in the graduation requirements, and a more realistic measure of the students who come to us with no English, and little or no formal education, and, and how they're measured with our, with our graduation rates. I'm, I'm looking forward to talking with Dr. Staples about that later, later this month. With, on the language programs, two-way immersion, I, at one point, I think as a follow-up, I had asked for the number and names of the schools that are eligible for two-way immersion. I don't know if you have that with you, if you wanna provide that to me at another time. I don't know if you have the number, but the, one of the things about the two-way immersion, we're always told it's got a nice zero cost to it, which always looks very, I mean, I realize we have to find the teachers for it. And Dr. Draun, you mentioned that before, that that's one of the, the issues. Do we have more two-way immersion coming in 2017, 18?
So, in 2018, 19, we're gonna be adding a program at Crestwood and Hybla Valley. And then we do have other schools that have expressed interest in, in future years beyond that school year. We actually included in the superintendent's update to the board, which I think went out on Friday, a link that provides a, a chart of all the current schools, the schools that are eligible for two-way immersion programs, and the schools that have committed to bringing on new programs. So you'll be able to see that by school, by region. And then obviously, if you have any questions, we're happy to follow up with you.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little surprised not to hear one in, in my part of the world, just because we have so many schools with high numbers of people who speak Spanish at home. So I would have thought that those-
So we have quite a few schools that are eligible. And the schools that we've met with, I think, are all interested in the program, but they're balancing out a number of competing interests and concerns. One being a concern about actually being able to find the teachers that are licensed and qualified. That's one of their concerns. And then another concern- And then another concern is many of those schools are also really working very hard in our Project Momentum program to meet accreditation standards. And bringing on another program requires a lot of time and attention and focus too. So it's really trying to balance out those needs and those interests. So we're continuing to work on it.
That makes sense. And lastly, you know my interest in the Vietnamese program at Falls Church High School? I think we're at the end of the second year, second, third year? Is that moving a pace? Are we going to get the next level in the coming school year?
Yeah, so we've got full sections of Level One and Level Two and we're going to be adding Level Three.
Excellent. And so we have plenty of students that are taking it to warrant the class.
We do.
Excellent. Well, I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you Sandy. Megan?
I'm going to try to keep my comments as much as I can at a very high level because I know that in the end, we are talking about a Goal One report. I have no doubt that staff has worked really hard. You've got a ninety-page report in front of us and we're reviewing the second half of it basically today. But I am concerned that either there's a lack of clarity from this board about what our needs and expectations are with these Goal One reports, that staff is overworked and overwhelmed and these reports are just sort of, you cobble the best you can, the information that's been indicated we want. But I don't see how we're fulfilling the board's vision and the school system's vision of a strategic plan and a Goal One report that reflects the strategic vision. And what I mean by that is that if you carefully review this report, there's beautiful lofty language that I think we're all in agreement of where we'd like to see this great school system going. There is some data sprinkled in there where we have the metrics or where we gave an indication it was a metric we cared about. But there's almost no analysis. At times, literally, you will see a data chart and the language just explains, this is what the bar graph is showing you. Thankfully, everyone around this table knows how to read a bar graph, but it doesn't tell us, so then what? What is it, if this is where we are, the snapshot of where we are on any given topic in this report, so then how do we get to the next level strategically? What's our strategic efforts to move this goal forward? I feel like that's not there. There's ninety pages of narrative and charts, but a one paragraph conclusion. And so coming away from the report, I don't even have a sense, you know, whether this was first Dr. Garza's baby, now it's Steve Lockhart's baby. But it's being brought to the board and saying, okay, here we are. And I don't come away with a sense of what are your strategic operational goals going forward with this? So...
Let me speak to that a little bit as best as I can and I'll just try to be as frank and as blunt as possible and then please forgive me in advance. But I think you point out one of the tensions that we actually are faced with when we create our response to this report. Because I can tell you, a number of folks in my department, as well as myself, actually spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to put this report together. We work on it over a variety of months, actually, trying to figure out what information we're going to share, collecting the right information and certainly presenting the information. And the fundamental tension that we have is that the metrics that we have in the report do not match hardly any of the desired outcomes or actions in the strategic plan. They're disassociated. So what we've tried to do in the report is provide you as much information about current state and what we're working on with respect to the outcomes and actions. And then you have this kind of disassociated data that doesn't really make a lot of sense. And you're a hundred percent right. We haven't done a ton of analysis on the data. We definitely can do more analysis on the data. We're happy to do that. But it is really disconnected from a lot of the work that we're doing, leading those desired outcomes and actions that the board spent so long with the community adopting. So it is one of our challenges. So I'm just kind of telling you what our current state is and we are more than happy to work with the board on a different future state in terms of what kind of information, what kind of formatting you would like in the report. We're happy to do that because folks really do spend a lot of time working on this. And the only reason they do that is to try to provide the board with helpful information. So we want to do our best to get that right.
And I very much appreciate your honesty and candor and I do feel that my commentary here is really meant to prompt our board to take a very serious look because this feels a little bit as if we've comfortably done it this way for so many years. And yes, there's been some tweaks in what we call it and maybe a little bit how it's structured, but overall, this is pretty much more of, here's the status of what we offer our students and then, you know, here's maybe, like you said, a few data points that don't even necessarily connect with what we're asking or what we're working toward. I'll give just one example, when we were talking about the data points on, you know, percent going on to four-year colleges versus two-year colleges, actually, that slides right up behind. In the narrative, you know, we have that there, but we don't have any historical data comparisons that say, okay, so over the last decade, what's been happening in Fairfax County schools? And as our demographics are changing, those percentages in where they are have been changing. And going forward, what might we expect that's changing? And those are just very real changes in our county that we need to be thinking about. When my husband's family moved here in nineteen seventy-one, that percent going on to four-year colleges was a lot higher. I don't know how much, but I think those are things that, when people think of Fairfax County schools, some do still think about where we were and what we looked like thirty, forty years ago. And it is changing. There's nothing necessarily wrong with change, but I think we need to make sure everybody's really aware, this board and this leadership team do a really good job talking about that we are changing. I hear some of our board supervisors talking about that we're changing, but I don't hear our board supervisors necessarily recognizing some of the actions they take and do in terms of services offered and housing and land development. Where is that taking us as a county and how does that affect everything else? So, you know, I think if we perhaps need to set aside a work session again, it's probably going to have need to happen when the school year is over. But my next step suggestion is going to be that I think we need to deconstruct this report and maybe we get board members who are willing to do this, almost like a task force with the new superintendent. And so I know everybody's time is precious, but I really think that if we want this to be meaningful, including historical data that has some state and national comparisons, but the analysis of what it means and as well as the, okay, so this is the why we have what we have, whether it's achievement gaps or otherwise, so now what strategically, where are the goals going forward? I'd like that report to have that meaning. Right now, it feels a little bit more, it's sort of just a narrative of, here's our goal, here's our programs we offer. And then Sloan, you just said it best, I mean, there's just some sort of disconnected metrics in there and I don't think it's allowing us to do our best work. So I didn't want to take my time to just start saying, hey, go look at page seventy through eighty and see what I mean. But I will just say, if you want to go look somewhere around page seventy to eighty, it captures my remarks. And then, Dr. Dron, did you want to say?
I would also add something I think will be really meaningful and helpful moving forward. Some of the reason there isn't enough analysis of the data is we're just getting the most recent data and then putting it into a report for December. So I know I've talked at the cabinet level and we've talked at the chairman's level, as I think has been brought up. Is there a possibility to have this report a little bit later in the year, perhaps after, you know, budget is over, we can really dig deeper into this and give us the opportunity to really dig deeper into some of the more current data that's coming out? Because we do get a lot of the data in the fall and we're trying to put it together in the report. So that's just another element to add to the conversation. I know it's been discussed, but I think it will really add value if we can move this report to a little bit later in the year so that we can then as staff provide deeper analysis and then give more opportunity to even present. I mean, the night we presented it, there were budget and CIP in the same evening, three major topics that went late into the night to be able to talk about. Then we're, this actually got scheduled. It was, we presented this to you in January twenty-sixth. We're not talking about it until March thirteenth. So aligning it better is just another possibility that I would add as value to what you just described in terms of being able to give deeper analysis and discussion. Because there's so much going on, I don't know if there's a good time, but a better time perhaps.
And just to follow up on that, we have planned to move it later in the year for next year for that very reason. For one thing, so it doesn't get all wrapped up in the whole budget time as well.
That's great. That's great. We really appreciate it. I do want to just concur with Ms. McLaughlin, though. I do think a new superintendent coming in might be a good time to have the board and the superintendent take a look at this report because I've served with two superintendents, three now with Dr. Lockard in Fairfax, and the reports have been very different. When I first came into the division with Dr. Dale, we gave lots of detailed data. We had many presentations that we gave to the board. Under Dr. Garza, it was kind of working with the board, it was decided that we wanted to go a little bit more high level. We might need to take a look and kind of reassess that balance again.
The Goldilocks of too little, too much, just right. You know, I do appreciate that, Ms. Evans. I'm glad you said something as well, but I think this goes again to a board process issue as well as our relationship with the leadership team. So both Dr. Presidio and Dr. Dron have been very candid now as I've been asking these questions. But I would ask all twelve of my, or my eleven colleagues, the twelve of us, to really think hard about what they just said. We somehow have created an environment that this whole board, until I started asking these questions, didn't know that staff was looking at this very report and saying, I'm not sure if there's a disconnect between metrics and, you know, desired outcomes, that they have concerns about the timing. And it's great that Ms. Evans knows this because she's chair, but the twelve of us need to have that very frank, fluid, two-way dialogue. It shouldn't require a board member to be looking at this and start asking questions publicly of, is this what we really want to be? What I heard until I spoke was, thank you, this is fabulous. Thank you, this is excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know Ms. Schultz is shaking her head. What I mean is that was the preface of the start because people were asking really good questions. Ms. Kofax, plenty of people asked great questions, but the preface first was, we communicated to you, a lot of us did, this is great, thank you. And so I'm very encouraged that you all were so frank and honest in your responses to my questions. I would just say for the twelve of us, please, in the future, if we start to realize, whether it's our chair and vice chair of the board, staff and the superintendent saying, maybe this isn't placed right, maybe we're not where we need to be, we're kind of delivering what we think you want, but we're really not sure this is serving you all well, we need to have those more honest and direct conversations. And I hope going forward, everyone on the leadership team through the superintendent, if you guys are looking at something you're working on, you're like, this just doesn't really make sense, I don't think it serves the board well and we're not bringing our best work, let's have that conversation. This is not, this report in the end doesn't interfere with our ability to operate on day-to-day basis. So if it's not how we need to be, okay, then we'll just have to rework the calendar a little bit. But I do want to close by saying, I know everyone at the staff level who worked on this certainly was trying to deliver their best work to us. And I really appreciate my colleagues who provided, especially Ms. Schultz, you said a lot of things that I fully support behind. And Ms. Kofax, you were kind of reinforcing as well, whether it's heat maps, whether it's bringing things together so that this really does reflect a strategic report. And I will yield the floor now.
Okay, thank you. We have two go-backs, Ms. Schultz followed by Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Well, that's a weird segue because I had planned on kind of being top-level at the outset and using a go-back to frankly do a little bit something similar. And this is, you know, six years in, it's no surprise that I say things like, there's a difference between data for data's sake and meaningful data that informs. And fundamentally, at a thirty-thousand-foot level, you know, invoking the Patty Reed rule, what you bring us should help inform us and help inform decision-making. And I feel like instead of a who, what, where, when, this needs to be a what, 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 what? You know, what is it that, I wrote down, what are you presenting to us? What does it say? What do you think is important in what it's saying that you need to convey to us? And what do you want us to do? You know, what happens? And let me use this slide because it's a very interesting slide for this purpose. And I remember an earlier, a report earlier this fiscal year, I believe, that the matriculation rate, the on-time matriculation rate from college of those who go to attend college is something in the forty percent, like forty-eight percent? Does somebody remember that? So of the sixty-two percent who go to a four-year college, those who actually graduate from a four-year college is in the forties. If you take, if you take, it's the next slide, can you go down one slide? Can you go down one slide? We're seven slides. Thirty-three, I think. So if, so what is the percentage? How, I don't...
You see the different lines here. So the dotted line is both two-year and four-year institutions. The red line is four. The purple line is two. So this is showing the percent of students who return for a second year in college. So again, we have lots of data points like this.
Yeah, this isn't the data point that I was remembering. It was different than this one. That's actually a relatively decent one, but that wasn't the one I was remembering. But in any event, can you go back to the one previous to that, the college attendance and military? So what could inform us would be, what, how are we directing and providing curriculum to K through twelve based on what the students wind up doing? Because we can provide all we want based on what we want them to do, but if they don't do it, then there's another, that's another gap between what they need and what we're providing. And if the twenty-seven percent who are attending two-year colleges are attending because that's what they can afford, because they go to work, because of, you know, whatever set of circumstances, does that inform us that, you know, instead of investing in fless, do we take those resources and we direct resources to content that facilitates certifications, that does work experience in high school, that does, as Ms. Corbett Sanders was bringing up, provides dual enrollment? Where do the resources go based on what the needs are? And that's the synthesis of information that I think, regardless of whether we've been particularly cogent in some of our metrics guidance, you know, sort of you need to tell us what we need to know, whether we're asking the right questions. And if we're not asking the right questions, I think it's incumbent upon you to tell us. I also think, and this is for my fellow board members, there was a lot of talk on our previous board about how we aligned our committees. And there were advocates for dissuading us from aligning committees to departments within FCPS because we might, you know, people who have an affinity for certain areas might align to this. This has proved to me that I think that if we had a committee on instruction and a committee on facilities, I don't think that's unstrategic. I actually think... committee on facilities, I, I don't think that's unstrategic, I actually think it's strategic. I think that if a group of us were meeting with instructional services and had heard some of this earlier from the leadership team and from staff and had said to us, look, you keep giving us metrics that we try to align a hundred-page report to, and then we say, hey, you're writing a hundred-page report, write a 50-page report that has more analysis. You know, that, that, that creates maybe a better symbiosis between the board and staff and drives us to the delivery of reports at the right time in the calendar year, delivery of the right information that helps us, helps you not spend time on stuff we don't want you to spend time on. So, you know, I, I think that whether this is a governance matter or, or otherwise, even though historically we haven't wanted to look at committee structures that align with what staff is doing, staff is aligned that way for a reason. You know, we, there isn't a, a strategic leadership team that is devoid of the areas of instruction and business operations that we do as a $3 billion organization. We have facilities and transportation, we have finance and budget, we have instructional services, we have special services. I mean, we're aligned a certain way because that's, and it doesn't mean that you're stove-piped, it just means that that's where the work happens. And if that's where the work happens, I'm just wondering if we couldn't help the staff on our board better aligning ourselves with you, so.
Okay, next we have Janie to be followed and concluded by Tammy.
Okay, I wanted to go back and kind of look at the glass half-full, acknowledging that it is just always a challenge collecting the data because, I mean, there's just such fascination with data and yada, yada, yada. So anyway, I wanted to look at slide 32. We know that, and because we've just read national studies, that for better or for worse, academic success is the strongest correlated still family income and education of the parents, particularly the mother, still, I mean, there was just a new study out on that. And if you look, high school by high school in Fairfax County, that is still the case. And the high school, the four-year college attending, those numbers are the same that they have been for a very long time. We're not seeing a decline in student achievement in those schools. And if you go back, all the way back to the slide that showed the early childhood experiences, it still lines up with, with income by and large and other issues. To, in this particular slide 32, one of the huge advances in Fairfax County, it's really the last 10 to 15 years, is the dramatic expansion of Northern Virginia Community College, the quality of the programs there and the wonderful partnership between Fairfax County, Nova and George Mason. And the George Mason piece has grown significantly at the same time. And some years ago, where the Commonwealth of Virginia agreed to take more of the credits from the two-year system, that has had a huge positive impact on, on completion rates. Where we have a lack of data and we just still do, is that even in Aviance, we know kids coming back for their second year in college or in community college, we don't have, I don't think we have a great data warehouse as to how many people actually graduate from high school out of our own county within four or five years. We have national studies that look. So, but in this particular slide where we can break out four-year, two-year military, which I think is, is a significant piece and 3% at other educational plans, I think this is a huge success for us. I also know that when we were able to do credit recovery, again, sort of the SOLs and whatever it is that we're required to do by the feds and the state, I mean, it's, we just are. When we instituted the credit, credit recovery over that SOL piece in the summer where you could go back and retake parts of a test, that had a very positive impact on kids being able to graduate then in, in August. So it's my recollection that this 92% rate is actually higher than it has been, so that I see is inching up. And high schools that have very high success graduation rates, because that's one of the questions I always ask at high school graduations, how many kids are not walking? And I find it, it is fewer and fewer and they have, we've figured out how to get them there. And then the, the new program that we have for our ESOL students with, with interrupted education, that is an amazing piece if we can help them get across the finish line. So I think we should congratulate ourselves with some of this. And we know nationally, we have the highest number ever of, of people graduating from high school, generationally, that is the highest ever. And, and there are some questions as to whether or not we're pushing too many kids into a four-year college because of the debt. And also the fact that if you actually look at, at career requirements and job placement, it really is, is technical skills after high school. It, it's not that everybody needs to go to a four-year college and end up being in debt. So I think this is, this is a good slide and thank you for breaking it out. So I think our partnerships with our own Virginia schools and our community college continues to be a huge bonus for our kids and I think a success story. Thanks.
Okay, Tammy followed by Illyon.
Thank you. I, I just want to point out as one of the meeting managers, we are going to cut this off at noon. We have to stay very much on time today because of the impending snowstorm. So we will break at noon, at 12:30 we will be back and we will adhere very closely to those times. We have to in order to get through our full agenda. So Ms. Strauss, I really appreciate you doing the half-full thing. Unfortunately, there's always the other side. I think when Ms. McLaughlin talked about graduation rates, I think in, Dr. Presidio and I have talked about this as well as Dr. Duran, I think a lot of it is kind of where you sit. And I think some of these conversations are needing, going to need to be courageous. And when you talk about student success, you know, when we were talking goals one and two, I brought up the issue of equity, I talked about it in terms of TJ. It'll be really interesting for us to see the graduation rates by pyramid. We really have to be honest about what's happening in some of our schools and where I sit. And some of the things that are happening are self-segregation, there's socioeconomic flight from some of our pyramids. There are, these are the result of tipping point studies, which we're not talking about. And there is a true cost to our system because there has not been full funding of this board, of the school, of the school system by the board, by the state or by the federal government with respect to the changing number and needs and how our student population is growing. We have, when I was the chair, I reached out to the federal government, I reached out to the state. We continue to do that. We work very closely with our funding bodies and I know this year we have another fight on our hands. We do have to realize and, and you know, as the budget chair, I will, you, you know, I will fight tooth and nail for this and they do give us, they give us all of our money. And how much more can we get? We do need to have funding because these things are real that are happening to our system. They are not something that we have talked about in terms of equity, in terms of what's happening. We, we touched on it, it skipped and there's a lot of good lip service there while there's talk there about, you know, when Ms. McLaughlin and I bring up the need, how is this fun, how, how are we going to fund this? We're told, oh, don't, you can't worry about funding, this is overall a good thing. And then the reality hits the road. So these things that I talk about, they're real, they're happening in my pyramid, you know, and how we deal with this, these are the really courageous conversations we are going to have to have. We are going to have to see, you know, we talk about wraparound schools, but we know that when children live and work and go to school in poverty, that's not the best situation for student success. How do we get them out, how do we get them out of that? Where, how, how can we show them what poverty doesn't look like if they only live, work and go to school there? What happens there? These are things which we have not talked about, not to any fault of your own. I thought we were on the, the launching pad to, to talk about that given current admin, you know, administration. And now we're back in a, in a search for a new superintendent who will, you know, have new visions and new guidance. But I think it's extremely important, I think the strategic plan that we put together is very, very important. I think it talks about these issues and how we need to tackle them. Well, not how we need to tackle them, but it talks about that they're real problems. We've set that out, we talked about the gap and we need to be real on this. I, I know how hard you work on this, I don't have any criticism of what you put together. I think we as a board have to show the leadership and we have to bring it forward and we have to say, this is what we need to talk about because it's very real, it's, it's happening now and the tipping point has tipped in many of the schools to a point where we have vast holes to dig out of, even though we're doing great things with project momentum, but that's but one measure of what's happening in the schools and we have to have that courageous conversation.
Okay, thanks Tammy.
Do they want to comment on that at all?
Okay.
Any comments? Well, I think that's, I think that's important that you agree.
Well, we certainly agree and I know we've had conversations and Ms. McLaughlin is also in, in Skip, we've talked about this, but certainly how do we publicly present that so it's not behind to Ms. Schultz, as she's mentioned about transparency? How are we not just talking about this in, in meetings, but how are we making a public part of our documentation so that the public can see that this is our commitment? And I think we're certainly committed to the areas and there's hard-to-hard conversations that don't happen and sometimes it's okay, you know, and I think this report, we do want to celebrate and to Ms. Strauss's point, we do want to talk about the glasses half-full, but don't leave then off the table. The reality is that we're not going to be able to meet and reach all of these goals without the proper funding and without those hard-to-hard conversations. So while it's great and I certainly think that a strategic plan must celebrate and there is so much to be celebrated in FCPS that we've highlighted here, but we can't just walk away from the table patting ourselves on the back for all those great things without then also talking about what needs to happen, where can we reallocate resources that we have within our current system, but even if we did that, we still don't have enough to meet all of these goals. So where are we strategic about making those hard decisions and not just celebrating? So we tried to, and I always when I present, try and do it in a positive way to make it be celebratory because there's so much work, not that the people who put the report together have done necessarily, but those that are out in the schools that are doing this work. This is only a reflection of what's happening right now as we speak in all of our schools across the county. The staff will put together this 90-page report, we're only sharing what the work that they're doing. They're the people who need to be commended and celebrated, but at the same time, to your point, we do need to make sure that we're having those hard conversations, which are often happening, but not necessarily in one strategic report to the public so that they can see in one place.
Thank you, Francisco.
Okay, we have Illyon and then Megan will have the last word.
I'm going to go back to FLESS and, and learning through content program a little bit, just one comment, that I'm a firm believer about providing opportunity to our students to learn a world languages and the sooner the better, the earlier the better. And whether, whether it's Spanish, Chinese, just any, any language opportunity will be better than nothing. But having said that, having said that, looking at the list of the schools and the kinds of language opportunities being provided, which was attached to the superintendent's memo on Friday, there seem to be about 50 schools, 50 elementary schools on the list and 90% of those schools are concentrated in just couple of languages. Those are very important languages, I agree, but at the same time, as we expand, I'm hoping that we can expand the further opportunities. As we expand, we need to be a little more strategic than just concentrating in just a couple of languages. That's a request, thank you.
Okay, Megan and then Jeanette will have the last word.
Okay, both at the high level as well as something specific, they're tied in between, this conversation we keep having about four-year college data, what does it tell us, you know, or attendance to two-year college, military, other. And as Ms. Strauss pointed out, that there are other changing dynamics that maybe we don't need everybody going to four-year colleges anymore. But that is a part of our responsibility then as an, as a school system and as a board to help communicate to the public, why would the four-year college percentage, why is it going down? And is that something to be concerned about, celebrated or a combination of both? There is no doubt that every selective university in the United States looks at that number and makes decisions, admissions decisions on the competitiveness of the learning environment when they're evaluating the students. So to Ms. Strauss's question, yeah, the four-year college data point has a significant difference in how the colleges look and view at the success of our learning environment. So if we want to rewrite that understanding and that definition and have it mean something different, this school system had better have a really compelling explanation for why we want colleges to not look at that declining number. And it has been declining. You know, anyone who's actually had the experience of going and having to transfer from one university to another, whether it's from a two-year to a four-year or a four-year to a four-year, there are advantages, like my parents who put themselves through a two-year college in order to reach a four-year college, there's my twin sister who transferred from a four-year to a four-year. Either way, it is hard to come into a four-year university and feel as connected to that student body as when you started there as a freshman. So when we only sell transferring in for all its positives, we're not having a comprehensive, honest conversation. And we should be informed before we go and, and communicate that there's only positives about transferring in because it's, it's, there are things we need to help families in making those decisions. We also need to realize that thankfully in Virginia, we have the most incredible public universities in the United States. So many, many families through financial aid and the low cost, you can access a four-year college. And I want to make sure, especially our first-generation families, know that it may look like it's too expensive, but there is so much financial support out there that their children won't be saddled with tens of thousands of dollars in loans, which is the national conversation, but we need to help people understand, family by family, what does it mean so that they get to make that informed decision for their children. And I, I do appreciate that Ms. Strauss is bringing to the table the conversation of, in the 21st century, you don't necessarily need to go get the bachelor's degree, if you can get certification in data analytics and cybersecurity and that's really where that student's passion and talent lies. So that's what 21st century, you know, work opportunities are. So I agree with Ms. Strauss that that's a component of it, but anytime we have conversations where you don't have a comprehensive explanation for why the data looks like it is, why is it meaningful, we are doing a disservice. And so I, I, that's why I wanted to go back because I think we, this one slide alone, it's, it's fascinating, but it, helping our community understand it, helping larger key stakeholders understand it, is going to be a part of our work.
Okay, and Jeanette.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on FLESS since it came up again. I definitely am all about kids learning a second language and beginning to do that, but it has to be effective. So to just say we're doing it doesn't help our cause, especially when it's a price tag of $3 million, which is what it came out as once we fill in for the triple T time for the budget, from that was the budget question response. So I, I honestly think if that is really, if we want to keep those dollars, then I would prefer putting them into two-way immersion or another language immersion school altogether. Most of the feedback I receive from parents and students and principals is that it is, kids become familiar with colors in different languages and numbers in different languages. And honestly, I just, at the price tag I see, I would prefer we're doing languages more effectively.
Okay, quickly, and then we're wrapping up.
Quickly, I just want to take this point of privilege to thank Kathy Oliver because she is retiring April 28th. And much of this data that is in this report, we would not be here if it were not for countless, countless, countless days, nights, weekends on her part. She has dedicated 36 years to FCPS and 50 years in education. She has dedicated 36 years to FCPS and 50 years in education. So, I have to take this time to thank her.
And that's a great way to.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kathy.
So, Mr. McAlveen, I need to read a motion to go into closed session.
I'm sorry, do we have next steps?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, thank you.
And then Sandy can do the closed motion. Okay, so let's go through these very quickly. First one's from Tammy, provide data showing standardized test scores broken out by cohort. Is that what you're looking for?
Was that me?
Did anyone else ask that? Tammy does not recall asking that. Okay, take it off.
No, 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 somebody asked it.
Oh, it's Elizabeth.
Oh, 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 yes. Not cohort, cohort over time.
Cohort over time.
It's disappeared from the screen.
I don't know, I don't. Yes, yeah, it's down there. That's, that's it. I don't know what the first one is. My mind.
Okay, just take it off. Okay, number two, provide more information detailing the agency responsible for each program and the source of funding for each program. That's you, Tammy, right? Okay. Yeah. Okay, is that good?
I'd like to see the cost, the investment per child.
This is, take this, okay. So, okay, on the one that's up there, number one, do we have a show of hands? Everyone fine with that? Quick show of hands. Okay, yes, there we go. Okay, detail available pre-K opportunities and number of students participating in pre-K programming.
I just feel like the two and three are actually combined. It's all one. Yeah. Actually, honestly, if you just took away two, three, the third one says what, the third one says what I want.
I have a question. On any of these, I would like to see cost per pupil for each separate program. Are the people who propose open to adding that? I know it's different for the different programs. For each of the different early childhood opportunities.
Send the budget.
Pre-K is, but I don't, I'll double-check that the different programs have cost per pupil, like early lit and family lit. I can ask it as a budget question, but.
No, I think it's.
Yeah, I would, yeah, if we can add it there, if Ms. Turner-Celfax is open to that, for source of funding and cost per pupil for each program.
Everyone fine with updating the slides? Show of hands.
Yes.
Okay. Show grade eight cohort for each year over time. Show of hands.
Just showing, so, so the cohort, so they may have started off in their, their grade two DRA, year to year, maybe different, but it's a different cohort. How do they look by eighth grade?
So, you want a consistent grade versus.
Longitud, they know what I mean. It's longitudinal cohort to cohort instead of just a dipstick into one grade.
Following the same group of students over time.
Right.
But I would, I would still prefer to say beginning with the grade two DRA, right?
Okay.
Beginning with grade DRA.
Okay.
Okay, support for that? Show of hands. Okay. Disaggregate data on Slide 32 regarding percentage of seniors prepared for post-high school. Karen?
Yeah, I would actually say disaggregate data by, disaggregate data by high school On Slide 32 regarding percentage of seniors prepared for post-high school and include career technical education certifications, because that's what I asked for.
Show of hands. Okay, number of names of schools eligible for two-way immersion.
Actually, that, that is in the, the report in the superintendent's update, so we already have that.
Take it out.
But could they, could they just?
Could it be put into the report?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine, it doesn't need to be a next step.
Yeah.
It's about putting stuff.
They've said they will do that.
But we want, it's to remind us to.
Okay, deconstruct report, create task force with new superintendent to deconstruct to make it more meaningful.
All right, so discuss goal one.
Is it just goal one then? I think it's the whole strategic plan and its metrics.
No, it's not. It's not.
We don't do that anyway. I want this to be.
Okay.
Maybe not what we want it to be.
Okay. And that would include some of the comments I made, would be able to speak about that then.
And could we put?
And then you can take deconstruct out, but just.
And then, this would be parking lot, but could we, and my colleagues can yea or nay, but a potential discussion about the alignment of our committees to the work that leadership With work of leadership.
Okay, this, these are next steps, so it's best we don't add these things. Yeah, okay.
You know, Mrs. Schuss, I would love to support your advocacy, but if you could bring it back to forum rather than doing that, because we had, we discussed that.
I'll tell you what, I agree with that. Can it be here that it was noted that it's going to be referred to forum instead of adopted as a next step?
Refer to forum, I would support that.
Schultz to refer to forum instead of the next step.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done. Ms. Evans.
All right, thank you. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss prospective candidates for employment pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Palchek, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, and we're now in closed session. Thank you. And actually, let's, let's move in there as quickly as we can because we do have some things that we have to discuss, and we're seven minutes behind. As, as our meeting managers have said, we do need to wrap up by five, so let's, let's get in there quickly.
Sandy, I don't think the planning stuff should take more than a half hour.
Oh, oops. We'll be back at 12:30.